I will start the meeting and Keith and other people from code enforcement, the building commissioner side will speak on information that they have on this situation. But let me just start, this Dollar Tree, the main focus of this meeting was to be the Dollar Tree at Island Pond Road and Allen Street, which is in my ward, towards the, towards the border of the ward, but it's in the ward. And I've been dealing with it since it opened in 2013, which I think was the opening date. And it's always been a problem with litter, just always been a problem and with people not using the litter barrels that are there, et cetera. So that's kind of what got this started. Some people have more data than I do about it, like the code enforcement guys go out and check on it regularly and stuff, that's their job. But that's the purpose of the meeting. So appreciate the number of Dollar Tree people who are here. And one of the things that probably we should just all understand is what's the Dollar Tree hierarchy? Like there's a store manager, and I assume there's a store manager of any store, and then that store manager-
Will report to the district manager.
Will report to the district manager. So is one of you the district manager for that particular Dollar Tree?
No.
Gary is.
Who is?
Gary.
Gary, who is on the phone?
Okay, great. Okay. And the other Dollar Trees that are in Springfield would report to all to the same store, uh, district manager or split up?
So it's split. So it's based off of our alignment. So it's mostly split between Sarah and Gary. And I had the stores last year for a portion of time. That's why I came to the meeting and to give my insight of what I've seen in the past year.
Okay.
Earlier today, I sent out a breakdown of which district manager is responsible for which store that was sent via email to everyone.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to see that, but thank you for doing that anyway. So is any Keith, Keith and Steve from the code enforcement side, would just like to make an opening comment about this meeting and what you hope to get out of it?
Well, hopefully, um, out of this meeting, we could try to figure out a plan to gain compliance. The Dollar Tree, Dollar Store at Allen Street, it's, it's just a mess there. I mean, there's no type of plan in regards to the cleanup over there. You can go on any given day there, just scattered litter throughout the parking lot, rod at leaves, et cetera. We did get a compliance, I guess, on the fence that there was a broken fence part that was written up in the past. It was completed, but as of this point here, where we stand, we still have the housing division going out, ticketing in, we have the Springfield ordinance of police officers that's been ticking in, and the zoning division that's been going out, ticking in. We've talked to the store manager in the past, and we have gotten nowhere. We pointed out that maybe that particular store, or any of the stores there, that they really should be doing a cleanup at least twice a day, morning, afternoon, and maybe that may combat the problem. A couple of days ago, our inspector was over there and the place was just absolute, a mess that was over there.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, if I could just fill in there, since I've been with this the longest, that 13 years of dealing with this store, and it got really, it was bad at the beginning. I don't, I can't speak to the middle years, I don't remember, but this, this year's been awful. There's not a day you go there when there aren't at least 150 pieces of litter on the, on the driveway per mile. And no attempt for it to be better the next time you go. It's just endlessly litter. So we have to talk about, as Keith said, improving the situation for supervising or, you know, policing the area and picking up the litter. And also, we need to talk about the tickets, ones that might still be outstanding, how many there are, have you guys paid tickets and that sort of thing? So those are probably, my mind, the two main topics today, improving the picking up of the litter and, and the tickets. And I'm, I'll turn it over to Victor as he's just getting situated here, he can run the meeting, but that's, um, off of what Keith just said, that Keith, Keith O'Connor that just spoke, he's in charge of code enforcement for our, for our city of Springfield. So he's got a crew of eight or 10 people, and they go around and police the city in terms of housing and building code violations, so.
Excuse me, before we turn it over, could I get an idea of how many ticket violations you've actually issued at this particular site?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Which side is?
This is the Allen Street Dollar Tree.
In regards to the tickets at Allen Street, they're numerous. Just a couple of days ago, there was a $250 ticket that was issued. Throughout the years, there's, there's a lot of tickets that were written. I don't have a grand total here. I know on our last meeting, my division, at that point, at the last meeting, we had like 250, but the other divisions had took the lead on ticketing, and I believe it was somewhere over $3,000.
Police department had over $3,000. I don't remember the specific numbers for the zoning department, but again, you've got three different departments going there, taking in. So it is a lot of tickets, a lot of money.
Do they pay them?
We don't get into the collection, so I couldn't tell you if they actually were paid or not.
Okay.
Part, part, this is Steve Dussas, the code enforcement. As far as the tickets, the tickets, if they're not paid by the property owner, those will be compacted into a lien at the end of the year. Steve Lonergan could probably talk to them more about the process of that, but it's, once, once they don't pay the taxes, it's going to get leaned against the property as part of a non-payment of taxes, fees, and fines in a lien, and they'll have to pay the additional fees for the cost of the liens that gets incurred with that. I, I think the biggest thing, I didn't get a chance to speak on this, but looking at, we've got all the management sitting at the table here, we've got everybody on a screen. What is your policy to deal with this? I mean, this has been a constant problem. Is there a policy by upper management that your local management is supposed to have the site cleaned every morning, maybe in the afternoon, maybe in the evening? Can somebody speak to that?
Uh, thank you, Steve. I will in a second. Before we entertain that question, I would like to say good afternoon, everybody. My name is Victor Davila, City Councilor, and the Chair of the General Government Committee. It is now one of five. We, thank you for Councilor Allen to start his meeting. He's only the chair, if I thank you for that. But you all got the message that I want coming?
Yes.
Yes? You say yes, you say no? Okay, okay. Good. So anyways, um, so here we have today, we have 20 more. Thank you for joining us. So that, did you introduce everybody?
I did. I'm just came in.
You just came in. Very well. And so the volunteers for the Dollar Tree, welcome to the, to the meeting. Could you introduce, I know you do this yourself, but for my own behalf, would you introduce yourself?
I'm Shannon, I'm a district manager, and I have kind of right passed over from Springfield, so like West Springfield into the Berkshires.
Sure, and you are?
I'm Sarah. I have a few of the Springfield stores, and mostly Eastern House.
Okay, so out of the two of you who will be in direct contact with Springfield, would that be you?
Yes.
Sarah? Okay. So Sarah, would you mind, can you fill that question that Commissioner Desalles just asked? Letting total, I mean, I have a clerk here, the clerk was invited, as the last time, last meeting, I think, that particular location was $17 worth of unpaid tickets.
So that one was 6119, that was Allen Street, so that is Gary's store, Gary Stanhope, he's on.
Is Gary here?
Yes.
Okay. But before we turn it over to Gary, because I think Commissioner Desalles, you had a, your question specifically was, what's the plan for the upkeep of the property, correct?
And there was, what's the policy?
What's the policy? Yeah.
And maybe I can take the beginning of that question and then hand it over also to the regional director, Jeffrey. I'm Jennifer Silverman, and I'm based in our corporate office, so Lead Sustainability and Corporate Affairs. But, you know, we put into practice, which we are starting and will in work to ensure it is implemented, our daily walkthroughs of the premise by the store managers, twice daily exterior cleaning. So I think to whoever brought that up, maybe one of the commissioners earlier, to make sure there is a morning and an afternoon one. You know, our team will look at what we need to do to enhance any support from additional trash or landscaping, porter services, to make sure that it's supplementing what the store teams are doing. We'll make sure that we've got open lines of communications with the council member, along with the commissioner of sending photographs as we're doing these, and then just check-ins on a, on a regular basis to make sure that we are seeing improvements. So, you know, I realize that, you know, these things are certainly, you know, retail fundamentals, and we're committed to making sure that our teams are working to deliver on this and to improve the conditions of the store.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
Yeah. So I want to turn it over if Jeffrey, who is the regional director, Gary, had anything else they wanted to add specifically for this store?
Go ahead, Gary.
So Gary, I'll, I'll take it, Gary.
Okay.
My name's Jeff Mello, I'm the market manager for this particular area. I just wanted to share with you some of the things that we're talking about doing and some of the things we're doing with some of our corporate partners to try to help with this situation. So as Jennifer mentioned, we're talking about daily walkthroughs of the premise, premises by management, and having some dedicated hours for at least two times a day cleaning. We have talked to our corporate partners, Webb is on here as well, and he could speak to some of this, but we're talking about some additional waste management in terms of extra pickups and quicker responses when we need, like, if there's any dumping that we can get a bulk pickup completed quickly. Webb has also set up weekly landscaping maintenance for the store, and we're also addressing the need for porter services. So initially, we're going to do that with store personnel, but we may have to give some enhanced support through an outside vendor for that as well. We have established-
Do I interrupt you? Jeff, sorry. Did you, what, the need for what kind of service?
We call it porter servicing, so just basically property cleanup.
Okay. Go ahead.
We're also, we've established a task system as a company, so we're using that task system so that the store will now provide daily pictures that the district manager will review and be able to tell them if there's areas they need to address that they haven't addressed. So that went into place starting last week, and the district manager Gary's going to be following up with the manager so that they understand the expectations around those pictures. One of the other suggestions we had was to establish a line of communication between the committee and the district managers who oversee these stores, so that it, at least monthly, we're checking in and seeing if there's any new concerns or anything that you would like us to change, so that we keep the lines of communication open.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
I did mention earlier, I sent out a contact list, with the address of each of our Springfield stores and which DM is assigned to those stores, but at the top of that list, there's also my contact information. I have my cell phone number there and my email address. I am always available if somebody needs to reach out to me directly, if you're not getting a response from the store or from the district manager. I'm always available to be your point of contact.
Very well. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Desalles, any follow-through, follow-up question?
Oh, so as far as your policy's in it, so going forward today, you're saying you're going to be moving forward to have somebody clean it every morning, somebody clean it every afternoon? I mean, it sounds like you're just kind of tossing it out there in the meeting now. Is this something that's an existing policy, or is this something you guys are agreeing to do?
So there's, there's not a written policy company-wide for this, but this is something we've agreed to do in the Springfield area to make sure we're addressing these concerns.
Um, I mean, we worked a lot of mercantiles in the city, and just about everyone that I know that I work with have some kind of policy that states they have their sites cleaned in the morning, maybe cleaned in the afternoon. I, I, you know, I'm kind of old, I'm 65 years old. I used to work at Marshalls as a stock boy when I was in high school, and we were required to make sure the site, the parking lots were cleaned every morning. Somebody went out in the afternoon, and somebody before closing time out cleaned it. That was a written policy back then.
Yeah, and Commissioner, a point absolutely well taken, that it's actually something we are focused on chain-wide, is making sure that those things are just kind of part of retail fundamentals. How do we make sure that the way we take care of the inside of our stores, we're taking care of the outside of our stores? So absolutely, and those things are going to be, you know, better communicated and better enforced by us internally moving forward.
Okay. I mean, Jeff, can you send us a copy of that policy when you get it in writing afterwards, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
We're partners with you. I mean, we don't, I don't want my staff being tied up, worried of my housing division, my zoning division going out there.
I understand. Yeah.
I mean, then I can at least distribute that with the people that are doing the enforcement, so we understand what your hours of operation for cleaning is. Because the last thing I want to do is say, if your policy says it has to be cleaned at 10 o'clock, and I send somebody at 9:30 to take it, it's not a fair shot to you either.
Okay.
Fair understanding of what your policy is, we have it in here. We can save everybody a lot of time.
Yep. Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilor Santillo, I see you will give me a quick second. Jennifer, just to follow up on that, so just to be crystal clear, you said that you are going to reduce this to a written policy?
Uh, well, I don't ultimately make decisions of how policies are developed for our store operations, but I will work with our Chief of Stores and discuss what the best way that we do it here, and then I will absolutely, whatever we end up documenting and communicating to our store teams, I'll make sure that the commissioner is aware of that.
Jennifer, I hear you, and please bear with me. From this perspective, from this side of the world, I have learned that in the city council, we get promised the world, and then we get the fuzzy end of the lollipop.
Yeah.
And so I do highly encourage, and I do have an expectation for you guys, to reduce this to writing, so that what Commissioner Desalles just said, so that these guys are not tied up doing this thing, because honestly, you don't need it, we don't need it. We're running with a skeleton cross it is, and I know you know, Jennifer, and the ladies in the room, and those others in the, in the call, this is a problem. That's why we're here. And I know, just like us, you guys want to solve the problem. So I highly encourage to reduce this to a written policy. And also, a follow-up question on that, is this going to be just for the Dollar Store at Allen Street, or all of the stores throughout the city?
No, well, I will say this, it is implied that it is a best practice that our store team should be doing this. We realize that it has not necessarily been executed and delivered with consistency. So certainly for the Springfield market, we have made sure that this particular policy, if you will, or task, as Jeffrey talked about it, is implemented for all the five stores in the Springfield area.
Right. So at least I feel that we have some actionable items here, at least as I understand it, Jennifer, you guys, you'll be in Dollar Tree. I make a commitment here today publicly, that the Allen Street location will have walkthrough by 10:00 a.m. every day. It will be cleaned, it will be cleaned by a litter of this reason, it will presentable. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I'm just making, I'm having a very hard time hearing, so.
I repeat it. So at least that we're clear, and I feel like we're doing some actionable items today, okay? You are making, you, when I say you, I mean the Dollar Tree store, I make a commitment publicly with the rest in the city of Springfield, that at the very least, for now, the Dollar Tree on Allen Street is going, a daily walkthrough, pick-up litter by 10:00 a.m. every day. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, yes. And Jeffrey and I will work with Gary, and we will, yes, we will make sure that that is happening.
Very well. I thank you, Jennifer. Councilor Santillo, your floor is yours.
Yeah, just a quick question through the chair. How much does the Dollar Tree owe in fines totally? And when do you plan on paying those fines?
Jennifer?
Uh, well, I would hope that we are current on our fines, but it sounds like we are not. And so we will go back. Rachel and I will go back and work with our team to ensure that the fines are paid, you know, immediately, as soon as possible. I, you know, I, there may be a delta or discrepancy of what we have record of versus what, so it would be great if there is maybe somebody from your team who can come back to us with what is, uh, what is the total amount, because often what ends up happening is the way fines may be delivered to our stores, or, you know, we have instances where sometimes fines in other municipalities are sent to somebody's home address, and so, you know, whatever is on record for the city of Springfield, if somebody maybe, maybe it's through Daisy that could get us that information, that we could actually get the total amount that we are owed, or that we owe the city of Springfield in fines, to make sure we can get up to date on that.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, here's the problem, Jennifer, through the chair. Perception is reality, and when people read in the paper that Dollar Tree doesn't pay their fines, and then other people start getting tickets, they're going to say, why should I pay mine, they don't pay theirs? So I just want to be real clear on this. If you do owe that money, please pay it, because it's sending the wrong message if you're not paying it.
Absolutely.
And my second, and my second question is, is it just the Dollar Tree that you're having a problem with regionally? Or are there other stores that there's dumping being done, or litter not being picked up at those other stores?
Sorry, is that, that's not a question for me. Is that a question for the council?
No, I believe that was for you, Jennifer.
That's for you, Jennifer.
Oh, it's for me? You mean, if we're having this problem in other stores or other locations?
Yep.
I, I mean, we, we have over 9,000 stores, right? So I would assume that we've got, you know, some stores that have certainly not delivered on our brand expectations, so that we would have these issues in other areas. Yes. But again, we work to ensure that the majority of our stores are living up to our brand standards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But thank you, Councilor Santillo. I do believe Kathy and Steve, you guys can follow up with-
We will.
Councilor Santillo's request.
Exactly what's owed.
Okay.
And send it to you.
Do you think we can do that by week's time, or?
We'll have it by end of day Friday.
Right, okay, excellent, excellent. All right, so, so Jennifer, we're going to get that by end of day Friday.
Okay.
Well, I know you guys are in big cooperation with 9,000 stores. I also, that means you have a lot of revenue and a lot of expenses, but I do feel that you guys should be able to pay this relatively pronto, to speak to some-
No, absolutely. I mean, and our apologies-
We'll take it easy to get the money.
Yeah. Our apologies for not having, if we have outstanding fines, there is, there's no excuse for that. So our apologies for that.
I understand. Before I go back, any of the councilors have any further questions, Councilor Allen?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Allen, who kind of started this, because I've been working with this store for 13 years. So, so we clear this up, Kathy gets us the number, Daisy gets it to you, however, and then you guys pay it. What happens then? What's the new process? Is it, is a, who's, who's, when a store gets a violation and gets a ticket, this particular store being the Island, the Allen Street store, is that store manager responsible for that? Or, you know, who's the follow-up person? We know they're, they seem like they're the follow-up person for cleaning the lot, cleaning the parking lot, but are they also the follow-up person for the, for the payment?
No, they do not make the payment in the store. They have a process by which they should be submitting the, the fine or the citation that would then get paid from the corporate office, but no, the, the store manager is not responsible for executing the payment, but they are responsible for submitting the citation or the fine. So we'll also, I'll work with Jeffrey and Gary to also make sure that our store managers in Springfield are very clear on the process of how to submit the, the fines and citations, so we can make sure that if we are still getting them, which hopefully we will reduce that number, but if we are, that they are paid in, in the timely manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm, I'm listening, and I'm, I'm wondering if one of the issues is, do you have enough employees at this particular store to accomplish this job? I mean, this can't be a new corporate concern, cleanliness of the store. And I don't know if you're aware of what a concern this has been to the neighborhood, and we have a couple of people here that actually live in the neighborhood, but I believe, and I think it was through a concerned citizen, wasn't there a petition with several hundred names on it regarding the cleanliness of the store?
Petitions? No, I'm not.
No, I thought there was, well, I know as a counselor, I have constantly heard from people about this, so it's really amazing to me that it hasn't been addressed before. And are they not talking to the right people about cleaning it?
Yeah, I, I can't speak to previous, you know, feedback, and again, we, I mean, we certainly, these are not living up to our brand standards, and we certainly expect from ourselves to do better. So all I can say is that we hope that with the right people that you have here in this meeting and in the call, you can see improvements moving forward. Unfortunately, yeah.
I would like to speak to the people that, that are really responsible here for that particular store. I think there's a regional manager.
Jeffrey and Gary, uh-huh.
Okay, Gary, I'll field it.
Gary.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to any of the past. This store was added to my market only about four months ago. Gary is brand-new assigned to it, so you basically have a new leadership team overseeing the Springfield area. So while I understand that we haven't lived up to our expectations in the past, I can only speak to what they're committed to doing now and in the future. And Gary is certainly committed to it. He understands what our expectations going forward are. Sarah has other locations in the market, so that's why we had her join, so that we are carrying that message forward to the whole market, not just to one store. So this is a completely new team for Dollar Tree that's overseeing this particular store and the other stores in the Springfield market.
Okay. I'd like to do a follow-up with Attorney Ken Che. There's got to be a condition of the special permit or zoning for cleaning, correct?
The permit would have that in it, yes. I don't have a copy of it.
So if there-
The permit was issued this week, it's always been put in.
It's been, you've been working on it. So if there isn't an improvement, what is a legal step, or what can be done to ensure that it gets done from, from the city council perspective?
Well, if there were violations on a permit for a store, and they're part of the permit process, the first step would be to make the corporate aware of what the problem is. If they fail to follow up on that, the next step would be for the city council, actually, it's part of another committee that would be brought in, and they would have a hearing on it, and if that didn't clean it up, it would go to the full city council, which could pull the permit for the store.
Yes, I mean, I think it's been going on for an awful long time.
Right.
And what guarantee do we have that it's actually going to be done? Are we going to be getting a report? We should be getting some kind of report. That's better.
I agree. Sure.
Well, just, can anybody hear me? Just for everybody's clarification, this-
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Definitely.
It's there.
This is Steve, definitely.
All right, Commissioner.
This use is allowed outright by zoning, so there is no special permit on this. This use is allowed outright by zoning, so there is no special permit on this.
Okay.
Uh, if there was a special permit, council would have been notified right away for hearing on it through code enforcement that there was violations of the special permit. So that's why you're not, you haven't seen it go that channel.
Uh, you know.
The use of mercantile is allowed outright by zoning.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking, thank you Commissioner, but you know what? I, I'm gonna, uh, recognize, uh, uh, resident, uh, Gary Martin in a second. But I do have to say, um. And I feel like I need to say this. Even though there is no permit. Even though there's a permit according to what Commissioner DeSala is just saying. I do have full expectations that you guys are gonna follow. And I know you guys want that as well because you want good business. But you know what we have that is better than a permit? The bully point. And if you don't follow through, we will make this extremely public. We will. And, and you know that for one, one cost, bad customer, they're gonna talk to other ten people. And I do have to say, I wanna speak as a consumer now, because even though we're city councilors, we're also consumers. I try to avoid the store like the plague. I do, and I only live seven minutes away from it. Yeah, compared to a store to Agum, to Islamero. The cleanliness inside is pathetic. The staff. Sometimes they're higher than a kite. It's very transactional, there's no good morning, no good afternoon, it's just like, nobody recognizes I'm a human being. And the quality I notice that is different from other stores. I'm sorry, I'm gonna say the way I see it, even if people get upset, it has become a ghetto store. It has become a store, and I say that with respect. It has become a store in which it's difficult to go in. The floor is dirty, things are disorganized, I avoid it like the plague. I only go in there if I absolutely have to. So I'm noticing, I'm watching the quality of what's in there. So why are we getting worse quality than other places? Uh, to me, that's unacceptable. And I say that because I, uh, want, I don't want anybody to get any funny ideas then, because you guys know how the special permit that we somehow don't, are never gonna follow through, we will follow through. Um, Jerry?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Counselor. First, I wanna thank, uh, Counselor Allen for organizing this meeting and, and even inviting me, that was, that was really nice of you to do that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, so, you know, I've been a resident of East Forest Park my whole life. And for nearly ten years, as this store has been open, it's been litter with trash. But beyond that, you know, the fences have been caving in, I've seen, I've noticed multiple debris, skids on the side of the wall. Like in, in unpaid and ignored city ordinance tickets. Like it's just unacceptable behavior. And on some of these city violations, these tickets that I have printed copies that I, I've seen. After so many days, the law department has the option to, to bring them into court and, and, and get an injunction to make sure that these plans are, are followed through. Because I know it's not a special permit. Um, and after meeting with the city solicitor, he agreed with me. And that there, after so many violations, that should be filed, there should be action that's filed. We should have a zero tolerance policy. So next strike, if it's left unattended and ignored like so many others for the past ten years. It, we should be right back, brought right back to court and that injunction should be sought. To make sure that the Dollar Tree is a good neighbor. Because for far too long, for nearly ten years, it's been a, a, abysmal neighbor with unacceptable behavior.
Yeah, good, thank you Jerry.
Yeah.
Uh, following up on the Council of Walsh point about some sort of report. Would you, uh, ladies and gentlemen of Dollar Tree, would you guys would be willing to come back? Well, I hope so, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm requesting you to come back and give us a report as to what have you concretely done to make this store better? We need to see some progress. The question is, what's a good timeline for you guys? Because I wanna be fair to you guys and give you guys the due time that you need to get things done. What would be a good time for you to come back and tell us what you have done? Jennifer, uh, Jeff?
Um, I wonder, I, and we can certainly give an answer now. But I wonder if you would allow, if maybe we meet internally? And then we can respond back to you later today or tomorrow through Daisy. And with that commitment of when we can come back and be able to show, um, you know, in, improvement in the store.
Okay, so Jennifer, um, I'm gonna get your information from one, one of the ladies here, Sarah or, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Shannon.
Shannon, okay, uh, before, before they leave, but, uh, that's fine. And I would like to stay in contact with you, Councilor Allen and Councilor Walsh, uh, some, Councilor Santinello. But at the very least, I'm sure, who's the store manager there again? Uh, who's the store manager right there at that store right now?
John.
Well, uh, I, I'm the district manager for that store, my name's Gary. The store manager of that store right now is, uh, Donna, Donna Harris.
Right, so I'm sure that we can, today after this meeting, pick up the phone, call Donna and say. Make sure that gets the litter class picked up tomorrow by ten o'clock in the morning. At the very least, we can do that, right?
You, you have my word that that conversation will happen as soon as this call is over.
Okay, all right, uh, the reason I say that is because I feel like, you know, we need to start working this right now, pronto, okay? So, thank you, thank you for that. Uh, uh, Councilor Allen followed by Jennifer.
Well.
Can I just ask one other question on the citations and the fines? Especially for this store that we're talking about. Is it usually the process that they are delivered directly to the store or are they mailed? Um, where do they, where are they sent?
Commissioner DeSala?
They're mailed to the owner.
Oh, okay.
All, all the tickets are mailed to the corporate office. Be the owner of it.
Mailed to the corporate office, so they're sent to Dollar Tree, not to the landlord?
Yeah, excuse me, I, I believe, uh. Commissioner.
If it's owned by Dollar Tree, then whoever the corporation is on the ownership of that, that's where the tickets get mailed. So if, if you guys are just renting or leasing from a property owner, then the property owner is actually getting ticketed.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are not, the, I believe we do not own this location, that we are, uh, we have a landlord.
I believe that that's correct as well, I'll check immediately and respond back in this meeting while we're here.
Excuse me, before we go on, uh, Attorney Moore, did you wanna share anything?
No, I think, uh, I, I go in with the building commissioner said the, the, the inspection takes place. Inspectors are verifying who's the owner of the property, cite the owner of the property, whether it's residential, commercial. I think there are times where they copy a tenant perhaps, so you know, where a tenant will get a copy of the violation. In this case, it probably makes the most sense to send a copy to the Dollar Tree's local representation. Send a copy to the corporate and, or whoever the owner of the property is.
Okay.
So I, because I, I think I just kind of warmed that open right now. So if they leased up, you, you said you leased that property, right? Is that what you just said, Jennifer?
Yes.
So Attorney, at least from my own understanding, so that ticket will go into the owner of the building.
Yeah, yeah, and all likelihood it did.
So, but Dollar Tree is of course responsible for cleaning it.
Yeah, so the ownership in most cases will go to the, the, the tenants and, and instruct them to correct the violations. The owner is responsible ultimately for paying the ticket. But that doesn't mean that they can't go to the tenant and say, you, you owe me this money because you caused the violation. You see it a lot in, you know, in, in like a residential, uh, housing, like a state sanctuary code type center, you'd see it. Where the ownership of a, an apartment would get the violation of something wrong inside the apartment. But it could be, well, the tenant was also responsible, say it was like litter or debris or something inside the unit, something like that. The owner would still get the ticket, but it would be something that the tenant would be ultimately responsible for fixing. So it's, yeah, it always goes to the owner of record.
Right, so let me play a devil's advocate here for a second. So then, who's actually responsible?
He. The owner.
Owner record, the rubber meets the road with the owner of real property.
So let me ask the obvious question, uh, who's the owner?
I have it right here.
Uh, Jerry?
I'd say it's an LLC.
Yeah. So it's Gregory Springfield LLC, Department three hundred, store six one one nine, five hundred Volvo Parkway, Chesapeake, Virginia, two three three two one.
He starts wanting to get in the, oh, I'm, I'm with this Gregory guy. Okay, uh, all right, anything else Attorney Moore?
No, no, there's, go in the building, I'm sure, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Attorney, uh, Commissioner, do you have anything follow up before I go on? No, okay, uh, Councilor Allen followed by you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're focused on, obviously, the Allen Street Dollar Tree as well we should. But Keith is responsible and Steve, Steve and Keith are responsible for, you know, code enforcement for the city. And I, I don't know Keith, if you wanted to mention the State Street Dollar Tree. Some of the pictures that we, that we, that went around, um, were for, were for Allen Street. Some of the other pictures showed a dumping situation and that's not Allen Street. That was, I think you said it was State Street. So I don't know that we should spend much time on it, but I just wanted to give you the chance to speak about that.
Yeah, State Street, that is another location that has been a constant problem. Um, probably more so than the Allen Street location. Uh, we have constant dumping, uh, being, uh, dumped on the property. Um, there were some pictures that were, um, uh, which I believe it, it went through an email and it could have went to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, people who are sitting at the table there now. Um, in regards to, um, I, I see like, you know, i- it's good to recycle in regards to the cardboard and stuff like that there. But it's, 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 I see like a pile of cardboard being recycled. It's left in the parking lot and then I don't know if people are rummaging through the cardboard, but it's scattered all throughout the parking lot there. We have stuff outside of the, uh, fenced area. Uh, there's constant, um, bulk items that are being dumped over there, tires, et cetera, mattresses. Um, and that particular store, there's only really three tenants over there, it's the Dollar Store. Then there's a dental office and then there's a nonprofit. So majority of all the rubbish that are, that is, uh, being accumulated on that property. At ninety-nine point nine percent, it's from the Dollar Store. One of the things that, um, that I probably forgot to mention too is, I would look at the number of receptacles that you people have on your properties there. Uh, Allen Street, I think when I visited that store, I believe it was last month. There was only one receptacle that was out there that was overflowing. And I, at the time, I told the manager that I talked to, I believe it was Donna, that you need more receptacles for one thing. There, and, and trash bags, yeah, exactly. She, uh, she had stated at the time that, uh, there are out of liners for the trash, for the trash containers there. I mean, it, it's a Dollar Store.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, it, it, again, the, the State Street, it, it's, it definitely needs to be addressed as, as well, Allen Street.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously on our radar. Thank you for sending those, um, you know, photographs. Sarah's actually the district manager there. So again, we're gonna be doing the same thing that we're talking about for Allen Street. Uh, obviously, it's across the, the five stores. I guess the only question that we did have is on the dumping. If there were any suggestions, are there any other things that as we work to improve our own processes and, you know, uh, uh, cleanup and the twice daily, are there any other things that could be done? That could prevent some of the dumping of the mattresses, of some of these other things that are actually happening on the, on the property?
Uh, Keith, you wanna fill that question or Commissioner?
Uh, so what we probably would suggest is, again, uh, um, more cleanup times there and cameras there. If you have a, a good camera system there, um, you can, uh, probably grab a plate number of, of a car that may be coming in. The, uh, the, uh, the ordinance officers, uh, who has been to your property numerous times there. Uh, they would take complaints like that, do an investigation to see if they could find the, the culprits there.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you, if other retailers might have had similar experiences in that neighborhood? And maybe some of the best practices that they put in place, like the cameras or some of the other things? Um, just if you had any other thoughts, so that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you Jennifer, uh, very well. Uh, so do a quick time check, it's down one forty-five, um. Do we have any other for, further questions on the other councilors? No.
Who is the landlord?
Oh, the landlord, uh, Jerry was Gregory.
Gregory Springfield LLC.
Gregory Springfield, uh, he's out of Virginia.
Correct.
So what is the responsibility of the landlord in all this?
The landlord has to pay the fines, unless it's in their, that they're responsible for. But if we leave the, if we leave the property, it would be to the landlord, it wouldn't be to Dollar Tree.
Right, and assuming that the landlord is aware of all these issues and has some responsibility here?
I, I will agree with you, that's a great question, uh, that's a great question. Just I agree also, you have, if you guys, uh, Jennifer, you guys been in contact with the landlord about this issue at all? Has there any, been any communication?
Uh, our T, our leasing team, Webb's part of that team, so he can probably speak to that.
So the ad.
With Jerry, go ahead Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the, the address on file that you have for the landlord is actually the corporate office. So it's possible that the, the fines are, are in, in documents are being delivered directly to Dollar Tree. But that is the correct landlord for the property and we do rent. And we have certain responsibilities under the lease. Generally, the cleanliness is some of the things you're talking about would not be a direct responsibility of the landlord. And we're not suggesting that the landlord, uh, w- would necessarily take that on. And, and so, uh, just clarifying that, uh, the address is for the corporate office here that you have, five hundred Volvo.
So Webb, I just wanna be clear, so there's five hundred Volvo address in Virginia, is that the owner's or your address?
That's the Dollar Tree corporate address for Dollar Tree headquarters. The landlord is in Rancho Santa Fe, California.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, I see, okay.
Address, so, so they have the bills, they're just not paying them. Yes.
Yeah, that's what, again, that's what I said earlier, people find out what happened.
Skip it Jennifer, Kathy, very good question Kathy.
I just said though, so they obviously corporate where they would send the bills, do, do have them, they just haven't paid them.
Yes, based on the information you're sharing, yes. And so that's what Rachel and I will follow up on. Um, again, that's why it will just be helpful to get the total that you have on record. So we can compare that with what our files say. Just make sure there isn't any delta and we can get this addressed ASAP.
Thank you, uh, Jennifer, uh, Jerry?
No, I, I also wanted to note that, you know, within the last two days or so, I have drove by it, the Dollar Tree in East Forest Park. And there seems to be somewhat of a cleanup. And I just wanna say that I hope it continues beyond just this questioning period. Um, and not that when this conversation is over and that this issue seems to be resolved, that it reverts back to the way it was. Because that's unacceptable. I'm gonna be watching, it's like a hawk and the residents of East Forest Park deserve better.
Thank you, thank you Jennifer.
And sorry, which store is East Forest, that's not the Allen?
That's Allen Street, yes.
Oh, that is the Allen Street, okay, all right, got it.
It's on the edge of the East Forest Park neighborhood in Springfield.
Yeah.
Got it, got it, okay, just wanted to make sure I knew what we were, which store we were talking about.
Very well, uh, anybody has any comment, follow up on this issue? No, uh, Councilor Walsh?
I think we should just summarize, uh, whoever's gonna get an action item.
Go ahead.
Whoever's got an action item, we should just document the action items here, so we know what we're following up on.
Right, so, uh, good point, um, so the action items with Kathy, by Friday, you're gonna, we're gonna have a complete accounting.
Steve and code enforcement to make sure we send them, uh, copies of all that. And we'll also, um, include the council on it, so you'll know.
So, uh, so you will, uh, provide detailed, um, accounting of fines.
Can I have till Monday?
Could I just ask, could you make sure they are for all of them?
Monday, just in case someone's out.
Uh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, uh, yeah, Monday is fine.
Monday, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm snagging on Friday.
Go ahead, uh, Jennifer.
I was just gonna say, please make sure, uh, if you can, that they're for all of the Springfield stores when you send that list tomorrow. Um, for the fines, if that's possible.
Oh, I will need Monday.
Monday.
That's fine, yeah, whenever you get it to us.
So that's what action item, second action item, uh, I think a young guy, might have been Jeff, did say that we're gonna pick up the phone, talk to Donna. At the end of this meeting to make sure that it starts tomorrow morning, that place starts getting picked up with the litter, right? Uh, the action item is. Uh, the action item is that Jennifer, you're going to follow up with the owner to make sure, basically, it discusses pay, correct? They will pay tickets.
Yes.
Okay, and then Jennifer, you guys are going to meet internally and you are going to discuss and, uh, a policy. And you're also going to follow where the higher powers to be, closer to God, to ensure that this gets reduced to a written policy, is that correct?
Yes, uh, exactly. We'll have a written, uh, communication for our teams and then we'll also meet internally on when we come back to you for a progress update.
Yeah, that was the last one, then you will come back to us, uh, I'm hoping not more than thirty days or so to. We'll see a progress update.
Yeah.
And, uh, good, uh, any action item that I might have missed?
I think code enforcement should get back to us and let us know if there's an improvement. We also should know if they have enough receptacles and if they don't, they should have more.
Is that okay, uh, Steve? Commissioner, is that a yes?
I think the way.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, got you.
More active.
Got you, thank you, Steve.
The inspectors are going to continue to, we see that it's actually compliant, so.
Got you, thank you. Uh, Counselor Allen, do you have the last words, sir?
Uh, that's a pretty good summary. Um, appreciate the, uh, fact that you all came and that, um, you're being honest with you, with us about the problems. The problems have been really, it's discouraging. I, I live about a mile and a half from there, two miles. And, and every time I drive over there, I mean, for years I've been going through the lot and I'm just, I can't believe why it doesn't get better, always the same. So the fact that you guys are going to make it better and came to this meeting with a, you know, open attitude towards doing that is, is important. It's a gateway, that is the gateway between two neighborhoods. And, um, yeah, so when you come in from the Forest Park neighborhood, um, to the East Forest Park neighborhood, um, which Jerry's referring to and, and I live in, um, you know, that's what you see first. And, um, it's kind of been discouraging. Um, and, uh, so I appreciate your attitude, appreciate your willingness to change. And I hope that you'll, you know, follow up with the documentation of, of these procedures, et cetera. And also let us know when you can meet again, what, what a good time to meet again.
All right, thank you, uh, anybody else has to?
Did you, Sarah?
Uh, yeah.
She doesn't want to make any comments?
Sarah, Shannon?
I don't have any at the moment.
Uh, Jerry, I think.
No.
Uh, I do want to finish by say, I want to finish the meeting by saying, uh, first of all, thank you to Dollar Tree. Thank you to guy, guys for being here. Jennifer, thank you, I, I, I want you to know that I'm fully aware that we threw a lot at you. I know that, uh, and I, I am, I'm mindful of that. So this is a symbiotic relationship. We want you in Springfield, we want your taxes, to pay your property, the, the taxes you pay, the jobs that you create in the city of Springfield. Uh, we are very aware of that. And, uh, I think that, uh, we just need to, because you are a partner here in the city of Springfield, but you know, when the same issue, we need partners, right? And so we want you to know that we are listening, uh, and feel free to speak on, uh, for the council on this matter. Uh, we are willing to work with you, but you guys have got to work with you. And again, sometimes we're skeptical, because I say again, we promised the moon and we get the fuzzy on the lollipop. And this has become a headache to us.
Yep, we understand.
A headache, and when it becomes a headache, it's a problem, okay? And so with that, I thank you, I will email you guys and we stay in touch. And if anybody else has anything to say, uh, meetings are adjourned one fifty-five.